Good evening, everyone. Thank you, guys, for coming out this evening for our budget haring. I know it said on the calendar that this is a budget input slash haring. It's simply a presentation on our adopted budget, which will go in front of the voters on May 21st for your consideration. So tonight, myself, as well as Dr. Pizzo, Dr. Casamento, Mr. Russo, and Ms. Fersenda will give you a brief overview of the proposed budget that will be put in front of voters on May 21st. Just as a side note, this year, one of the things that we did over the course of several board meetings from February through March, we broke the budget out by function codes and presented on each area of the budget to the audience that was present. This is the first year that we did something like that because we believe that it is our responsibility to make sure that you, our public, is fully aware of what goes into developing the budget. One of the things that I say on our roadshow is that a budget, a school budget, is not simply a bunch of numbers, but an educational plan for the upcoming school year. And while that plan represents input from many individuals, it also represents a 12-month-long process wherein we meet with our budget administrators, meaning our building principals, our directors, as well as our teachers, and we hear also from you, our community, on what your priorities are. Once we get those things in order, we then have to sit through and develop a educational plan that, number one, maintains the current programs that we have in place, and hopefully we're able to add a little to that. However, one of the things that I've been saying over the past several weeks is that in a 2% tax cap environment, it makes adding things a little bit more challenging. What I mean by that is, every year, we have to move our budget from the previous year forward to continue everything that we currently have in place, as well as recognizing some of the contractual obligations we have that causes increases. So tonight, one of the things that you're going to hear is that we have an increase in our expenses of 2.39%. Typically, that 2.39% is already baked into the spending plan because of contractual obligations. So before we even get started thinking about what are some other things that we could do for kids that will be beneficial, we are already faced with this increase that is there that had been negotiated long before we ever got to the table talking about what our priorities would be for the upcoming school year. So I'd just like you to keep that in mind. Nevertheless, I think this year, while our budgeting process was somewhat challenging, we were still able to maintain programs and continue to implement some of the programs or initiatives that we've started over the last several years. So tonight, that's what we're going to be talking about. So to get us started, I'd like to turn the program over to Dr. Pizzo.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Card. Some of the things I'd like to mention on this slide as well is, you see here, provides for capital program, health and safety concerns. We have just over $1.1 million of capital projects that we have included in this budget. We also have a capital reserve of $400,000. You may recall, last year, we had established this capital reserve, and we need to now go back and ask for us to be able to access it. We were able to fund it by $1.8 million last year out of fund balance. That's money that was already taxed for, so that's why this is of no additional cost. It's a cost that was already paid for by our taxpayers. You see here, the last two slides, we have our expense budget increase. That's from year to year, the increase of 2.39. We also have exhibited the tax levy increase, which is 2.14. And we'll get, on a later slide, we will get into more detail on that, and this information is also available online because it is a lot of different lines. It's kind of hard to make out from just the slide. Okay, we'd like to do a show, an eight-year rundown of where we've been in regard to a couple of different factors, in regard to our expense budget, our levy increase, maximum allowable levy. You'll see that we've matched the maximum allowable levy as we're trying to, we're trying to not have spikes up or down, and that was, that really dovetails with what we talked about during the bond when we did the bond vote, about having certainty in regard to debt service and other items that are components of the exclusion. So this shows the efforts that have been made over the years. Okay, this slide covers the three areas of the three-part budget. We are required to provide information on how money is divvied up between these three areas. Okay, now you can see a more detailed breakdown of the numbers, and what you will notice here is that the vast majority of our resources goes towards program, which is appropriate because program is the item which captures the resources that are most closely going towards kids. So you'll see, that's the largest area. But on the next slide, there's something which we need to explain. Sorry, I'm trying to talk into the microphone. Well, as you'll see, you'll see what looks like a drop in program, but that's not actually the case. That's just a, in regard to ESA requirements, we needed to reclassify positions that we feel are program in nature, but to comply with ESA, we had to change that. So we're actually, still the vast majority of our resources going to administration, and that doesn't really, going from year to year, that's why you see that difference. Okay, as we know, we can't have a budget presentation without a pie graph, so now we have that information exhibited in terms of our pie graph, which is, you know, just these, the same breakdowns you'll see on the column, and again, all this information's online if you wanted to get a closer look at this. At this point, I'd like to ask Jennifer Fersenda to cover two of our cost drivers.
Two of the cost drivers that we have are both of our retirement systems. We have TRS and ERS. This year, TRS was quite favorable. As you can see, there's a drop from 10.62% to 8.86%. Now, these numbers are given to us from the state, and we have no control over them. Since it is favorable, this does amount to approximately $1.2 million that we were able to reallocate into other areas of the budget. Same thing goes for ERS, however, the drop was not as significant. It was 15.3%, and it is now 14.9%. Back to Dr. Pizzo.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Going back, okay. Okay, now, the next cost driver that we have here is the health insurance cost. What we show here is the family plan, which most employees partake in. As you can see, this is a constant issue for us to deal with, and it's gone up. Maybe it hasn't, the trend hasn't been as much as past years, but it is still substantial. And there we go. What I'd like to talk about now is that's some things that we're adding, addressing a concern we all have in regard to security. Many different items we're looking to address from security using multiple avenues of resources. Under the capital budget, we are looking to expand our footprint in regard to security guards. What this budget calls for is five additional security guards, which would be one at each elementary school. This addresses an issue that was identified last year that we understood full well, but we knew it was going to be a multi-year process. We will now have the two guards at the elementary school, so we'll have better coverage, and as part of the layered approach, this is just one of, you know, multiple steps that we're doing. This is in regard to having people out on site, but of course, there are also technology issues that are being, we're looking to address through the smart bond, which we're hoping to move forward on as soon as we receive approval in that area. Next, I'd like to turn over to Mr. Russo.
Thank you. Well, as Dr. Card indicated, this budget maintains all current staffing levels and provides for no cuts in student programs or services. So when we're looking at staffing for budgetary purposes, we're really looking at four broad categories of staff. We have administrative staffing, elementary instructional staff, secondary instructional staff, and non-instructional staffing. When it comes to administrative staffing, which is the next slide, okay? Thank you. When it comes to administrative staffing, we have three subcategories. We have central office administration, which is everybody here from central office, building level administration, which would be our principals, assistant principals, deans, and chairpeople, and district-wide administration, and that would be our directors. In this area, we're not proposing any changes, either up or down. However, in the area of elementary and secondary staffing, we are proposing some changes. So to talk about those changes, I'd like to turn over to Dr. David Casamento.
All right. So this budget keeps all programs that we currently have intact, but every once in a while, the state throws us some zingers where we have regulations that we then need to meet. And so one of those regulations took place this past year, and that was the mental health regulations. And those actually went into effect July 1st, and I think we got them July 1st. So we were scrambling, and so this budget actually firms up our mental health curriculum. This year, we were able to provide two lessons in mental health to grades K to 4. Grade 5 has 10 lessons in health. This budget provides for an additional health teacher, which will allow for 10 lessons to be provided to grades, students in grades 3 and 4 as well. In addition, a regulation that's actually been on the books for a while, and we haven't quite kept up with that regulation, is the amount of time students are supposed to be in physical education classes. For those of you with students in the elementary schools, you'll know that in grades K to 2, they have two periods of physical education, 30 minutes, 30 minutes each session. So with this budget, we increase the physical education staff by one, thereby allowing us to get closer to, not at exactly, but to get us closer to those regulations, and so students in grades K to 2 will have two sessions, 45 minutes per session, and that will be similar to the 3 to 5. Now, Ms. Detour is working with her staff and the building principals to see how we can get the additional 15 minutes at those grade levels that's required by the regulations. Similarly, we are bringing students back into the district, and so with that, we are going to be opening up another 12-1-1 class, and at the same time, bringing those students back and many of the students that we actually have to provide services for, there'll be an increase in speech and psychological services as well. At the secondary level, if you'll remember, last year, we started co-teach in grades 6 and 9. Well, this budget extends that to the next level, so students in grades 6, 7, 9, 10 will have the co-teach model. And I think that, is that, oh, now, back to Mr. Russo.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So in terms of elementary staffing projections based upon the information shared by Dr. Casamento, if you take a look, you'll see that we are adding one additional health teacher. That's to, so we have a teacher to roll out the new mental health curriculum. We also are budgeting for 1.2 physical education teacher, that's so that we can better meet the physical education mandate. We also are budgeting for a .2 school psychologist. Point 2 is equivalent to one day. So we currently have a .8 school psychologist who works four days a week, so by adding that point 2, that individual will work five days a week and be full-time. We're also budgeting for a .5 speech teacher, which equates to 2.5 days a week, and one additional special education teacher at the elementary level. That's at Meadowbrook for our kindergarten program because we're seeing a number of students who are coming in and need to go into that program. Okay, secondary staffing? All right. Secondary staffing is pretty straightforward. We're up seven teachers, and six of those teachers are for the co-teach, integrated co-teach program. So those teachers will be working at secondary level, and then for world languages, we have the need for an American Sign Language teacher. Our American Sign Language program has grown over the years, and based upon student interest and based upon course selections, we have the need for an additional teacher, which is a good thing. Non-instructional staffing? Okay. So we are projecting to be down six intervention assistants. That's directly related to the rollout of the co-teach program, because what's happening is, is the students who are going into the co-teach program are currently being serviced by the intervention assistants. So what that means is that we no longer have the need for the number of intervention assistants that we have in the district. However, typically, we do see a large turnover in that area because our intervention assistants are certified teachers. So we're not anticipating laying off any staff. We do believe we will be able to absorb those positions by attrition as people get teaching jobs. Also, we're projecting to be up three monitors. That's within the special education program, as well as up six teaching assistants, one for the class over at Meadowbrook, one for Clark High School, and four for Bowling Green. Because over at Bowling Green, within our REACH program, which is a program for students with autism, the, that ratio currently is six students to one teacher to two teaching assistants, and we intend to expand that ratio to eight students to one teacher to three teaching assistants. So by adding that additional teaching assistant, that's why we have the need for four additional teaching assistants over at Bowling Green. So to talk about points of pride, I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Casamento.
So this slide pretty much speaks for itself. We know we have great kids. We know we have great staff here in East Meadow, and this is just some of the great things that have happened over this past year, and it continues to grow. This slide was actually made in March, and every day, we win more and more awards. In fact, that national, two National Merit semifinalists, one of them actually, we found out yesterday, was a $2,500 winner. So there's, what'd I say, 1,500 of those across the country, and we have one here in East Meadow. So there's so much to be proud of, and this is what the budget supports. And to continue the presentation, back to Dr. Pizzo.
Okay. Always the toughest slide to follow, a lot of great items on there. Some of the things that pertain to other areas, we do have issues, we do mention about some of the things with the bond phase 1's done. We're looking to go forward with phase 2. And to talk a little bit more about some of those facilities-related issues, we do have still a focus on cost-reduction efforts. This is, I can't go through any kind of presentation without mentioning LED bulbs at least once. We've had some, we've done some major projects in that regard, and that produces savings. We also are working on an energy performance contract that is getting close. We're hoping within another, maybe two months, we will be ready to go on that, which would further enhance our ability to control the temperature within our buildings and give us the opportunity to burn both oil and gas in all of the buildings, which is a cost savings as you can go to whatever is lower, primarily, gas is lower. And there's always, there's always areas where we can save. So regardless of the fact that we have a bond and energy performance contract, this is always an issue we're looking at, including in the budget, we have security vehicles because we're very light in regards to the security vehicles and have many issues. We're also looking at two of those two vehicles being electric, and we think that that would be something that would be nice, and it's something that we could also do by getting a rebate from PSCNG in regard to the charging station. So looking into these different areas, we still try to move forward. Okay. Okay, here is that tax cap calculation that I wanted to speak about. And the tax cap is the, you know, the misnomer of it being a 2% tax cap. That's not actually the case, although it is one of the numbers within the formula. And if you'd follow it through, you see you'll have last year's information. Some of the items that are captured is pilots, which is payment in lieu of taxes. So that is what we received last year, and then what we received this year. One of the lines that's very important on here, you'll see the dark blue line with the exclusions. The exclusions, when we talk about the cost certainty in regard to debt service, we have, in regard to debt service, our old debt service is falling off this year, and next year, we're at the very end. So as the new bond work goes forward, we will have, we have the debt for phase 1, and we will shortly have the debt for phase 2. So you see, we timed that, so one would replace the other to some extent. We also have a reserve for bonded debt, which we access by $290,000 this year, and that's captured within that calculation. We have the balance of roughly $2 million in that reserve, which we would need to apply next year, and again, that will be, that'll be all reflected. That all has implications with regards to the cap. What you see on this next slide, that's just teasing out the numbers that are important to us, the tax levy limit, and that's the star increase, that 2.14 from the levy limit last year to the levy limit this year, and that's just teasing that out because that other page is kind of hard to follow. Okay. One more. Okay. We're also required to talk about the contingency budget. This is something that we haven't, we haven't had to deal with in decades here in East Meadow. This would be, this would be if we did not receive approval, and then we would go to a contingency budget, and a contingency budget has several requirements. Equipment that's needed would not be, we would not be able to purchase. The issue with that is it hurts us both short-term and long-term because we still need to do the things we do with the equipment, so it means that you would have older equipment with repairs. Another hurtful aspect of this would be, the capital projects would also go away, and the capital projects are really dovetailing with the bond projects in regard to, we're working on infrastructure very often with the capital work, which is helping, you know, build the infrastructure to support the good things that we're looking to do in regards to temperature controls, air conditioning, and the electrical upgrades that go along with that. So that's, it really is, it really hits us on multiple areas. Another area where a contingency budget would hit us is, we have a longstanding tradition of offering our buildings and fields to community groups, which has really been a thing that's really beneficial for our children in the district and also all children within our district. Under the terms of a contingency budget, we would have to value that, and we would have to charge those outside groups who'll be using the building at the value for the services we're providing, and so that's just something we need to let you know about. Okay, what I have here is the breakdown in regard to the contingency budget compared to the budget. You see, you have the 1819, the 1920, and you would have the impact of the contingency budget. As you see, it would have a pretty startling impact on us. It would be almost $2 million out of this current budget, which is, which is quite tight in regard to the, to what we're trying, looking to be able to address this year. With the last slide, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Dr. Card.
Very good. Thank you. What you just saw was a condensed version of our five budget presentations or budget workshops that occurred from February through March. So I'd like to spend a few minutes just talking about what the development of a budget entails, or at least what we have gathered from the budget presentations that we've been making. Over the last several weeks, we've visited a number of PTA meetings. We've heard from faculty and staff through our presentations, and invariably, people, when asked questions, will share with us their priorities. In a K-12 district, you're going to have multiple priorities from multiple constituencies. One of the things that I've often found throughout my career, there's always this dichotomy between secondary and elementary, wherein those folks who are at the elementary level who don't have any kids at the secondary level usually tend to have a different perspective because they're just entering the system. While families who are at the secondary level, meaning middle school and high school, have a different perspective because their kids are at commencement and getting ready to move on, therefore, there are vital programs at the secondary level that need to be maintained because they're correlated or tied to college acceptance. And so our job in central administration, in working with our building principals and our directors, is to balance those needs and those wants, and in some way, to create an equitable school system where all kids are benefiting from the programs that we have in place. So our first priority is always to maintain what is currently in place and what is required by law. So when we're having these conversations, things that usually will come up will be, can we add air conditioning? Can we add more security? Can we add additional services? Can we add more maintenance throughout the district? Yes, those things are priorities, but if you notice, Dr. Pizzo just talked about what happens when our budget doesn't fail. What becomes a priority? Well, all equipment goes out the window, literally. And the only thing that we get to keep in place are those programs that are mandated by state law. So with that said, we try to the best of our ability to prioritize the needs of the district to ensure that not only are we providing what the law says, but we're also providing enrichment and remedial services to ensure that kids are getting and maximizing their experiences while they're here in school. It's not easy in a 2% tax cap environment. And so one of the things that we strive to do is to create efficiencies by, number one, looking at how we could shift costs from the district to BOSEs. Why would we want to do that? We would do that because we receive about 45% in aid back on those programs that we send out to BOSEs. So a perfect example would be our summer school program. Last year, we decided to shift the responsibility of providing summer school to our students in the district to BOSEs, even though we have to pay them an extortion fee, I mean, a consortium fee. And the reason why we do that is because we receive aid back on those funds. So instead of spending $100,000 on summer school, we only spent $55,000. So we now have $45,000 that we could use for other things. It's a balancing act. One of the other areas that we also need to pay particular attention to is how courses run at the secondary level. In other words, are courses fully subscribed or undersubscribed? Do we have courses that are singletons that only have 10 kids in it in May, only to find out in September, several kids dropped and we only have eight kids? Because eight kids in a classroom with a full-time teacher is rather expensive. Those are the things that we have to manage and we have to pay particular attention to as we build a budget that's going to help us to maintain programs and add additional programs to what we do. It's not easy, but we get it done with the help of our staff and with the help of you. One of the things that Mrs. Rubenstein asked me to touch on was, Dr. Pizzo mentioned ESA. What's ESA? ESA stands for the Elementary, what? Every Student Succeeds Act. It's an extension of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. It's a new requirement. It replaces Nickelby, No Child Left Behind, and it changes some of the mandates that are in place. For example, one of the things that we're going to have to do over the course of the next year is demonstrate equity, equitable distribution of resources from building to building, meaning, are we distributing our resources where the actual need exists? And we're going to have to demonstrate that through our per pupil expenditure to show the state and the federal government that we're spending our funds appropriately to meet the needs of kids. So that's another layer that's going to be added onto our budgeting process to make sure there's equitable distribution of our resources in the district. Notice, I'm talking about programs and not those other things that make this a vibrant school district, and that's one of the challenges that we also face. But nevertheless, as I said, we're moving in the right direction. One last point that I'll make, Dr. Pizzo also talked about this, smart bond. Smart bond is something that you voters voted for about five years ago. You voted vis-à-vis the regular elections that happened in November to release funds to districts so that we could to districts so that we could support infrastructure development and technology. This district is waiting to receive our $4.1 million. That $4.1 million might sound like a nice chunk of change, but that $4.1 million is already spent. What is it spent on? Well, it's spent on the things that the state says that we can spend it on. Technology, technology upgrades, wiring our district to make our district more 21st century-ready. Many of you are probably, have probably been in some of our buildings trying to use your cell phones, and I know the student in the back probably has tried this before, and he's shaking his head because he knows what I'm talking about, and there's no Wi-Fi connection. Well, if there's no Wi-Fi connection, it makes us, it more difficult for us to try to roll out a one-to-one initiative, or to increase the use of personal computing devices, particularly at our middle and high schools. So all of those things are things that we're attempting to balance in a budget that is capped. So I'd like to thank all of you for coming out this evening to listen to what we're proposing, and hopefully, you'll show up on May 21st and exercise your right to vote. At this time, I'll turn the program back over to Mr. Melnick for some further directions. Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Card. I would like to thank Dr. Card, Dr. Pizzo, Dr. Casamento, Mr. Russo, Ms. Fresenda, for putting all of this together. These guys worked tirelessly, literally all year, to get to this point, as well as our building principals, our staff, everyone else, including the public, who all have input into this budget that makes it, makes us able to get to this point today. So thank you all for that. Some of the things that you mentioned regarding the smart bond, just bringing everything up and the AC units, and I know this has come up in the roadshow previously, is why don't we, why don't we have ACs for every classroom, every room? Part of that, I think Dr. Pizzo has spoken about previously, is our buildings just aren't able to handle that kind of power right now. And that's something that we're working towards, to be able to bring those sort of, that infrastructure to each school, so that we can then get to that point where we can do those things. But physically, right now, to do that would blow out the system and just not be useful for anyone. And I think what Dr. Card has brought to us, and really brought to the forefront, to the board, is setting up a five-year plan, and continually working on that five-year plan, to not just go budget to budget, what can we do this year, but say, what can we do over the next few years, and set that in motion and in place for not just the immediate needs, but what can we do in the future? What are those extras that we'd like to do? And be able to set up a plan to get those done within that timeframe, or at least set us on a path to get those things done. And I will come to you. There is actually, as long as we're here, Ms. Fresenda has the blue cards, for those of you who would like to comment tonight. If you could please fill out a blue card, and you will have your time to do so after the board makes its comments. So what I think is, for us, is, I think we have a really great budget. I think we've worked really hard to put things together, not only cover what we need, but get in a lot of the stuff that we really wanted to be able to get in, to improve our district, to improve the education of our children, and sort of set us on a path to keep increasing that. Are we at a point where everything is perfect? No. And truthfully, we'll never get to that point. And if we ever are satisfied with where we are, I think there's something wrong. Because I think there really is always, always something that can be better. I think we are, we are moving in an excellent direction, and we're in an excellent place, but we're going to continue moving forward. With that said, I think people are tired of hearing from me, which I understand. So I'm going to turn it over to any other board members who have any other comments that they'd like to make.
Good.
Okay. Excellent. Then I'm going to turn it over to everyone else.
I'm going to fill in for the blue card. I was just going to say, pertaining to what you said, it was my understanding that was part of the foundation for putting that stuff into the larger framework, or something?
Yes. And a lot of that stuff is being done as part of the bond. As Dr. Pizzo said, we're going through the phases. Part of that is, and I know redoing roofs is one of your favorite things, is redoing the roofs, so that we can get AC units on the roof, because we can't put those on old roofs and then rip them up and all that other stuff.
Those things that you focused on when you were presenting that bond?
Yes. And part, and much of the bond, and the point of the bond, was to help set our infrastructure so it's able to handle all of these other things that we would like to do. Absolutely. Thank you. Is there anyone else who has any comments?
Somebody's trying to go ahead.
Oh, there's a writing. Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm going to stop now. Wait, so if you have a child, one?
Can I just interrupt?
Can you?
Community has to go to the mic in order to hear your questions, and I'm sorry.
And just to, just to note, should I do the three-minute limit?
Yes.
Yeah. Just to note, it's a three-minute limit. If I cut you off after three minutes, it's not because I don't like what you have to say, or do like what you have to say, but we try to keep things as.
Am I allowed to sit down? Still allowing anyone to come back? All right. So a few questions. One, as far as like with the technology part that was brought up in the budget and infrastructure, is there anytime soon that, like, our website's going to be updated to include more information and have a little bit more transparency for parents? And when can we expect that to start to happen?
Our website currently is under construction, if you will, in that previously, each building had a different layout, a different format. Because of the tireless work done by Dr. Casamento, we have now gotten all nine of our buildings on board to follow a standard format in terms of how our website will look. The buildings will, the buildings pages will now look similar to how our homepage looks, and we're currently working out the items that will flow onto those pages. So we're doing ongoing work, but one of the things that I want to note is that over the last two years, we have become very social media savvy. And so in addition to using our website, one of the things that our website does do is track you back to Twitter. There's a Twitter feed, if you scroll down on our homepage, where you'll find that flow of information that's not only coming from central administration and building principals, but also from teachers, as well as three buttons on the top of the page that takes you to Facebook, Instagram, and also Twitter. So we're moving forward, but it's a work in progress.
Okay. And I guess my other question is going back towards last meeting regarding this special ed audit that you had mentioned.
Right.
I was just, I didn't really get to ask more about that in general, of what exactly is going to be included in that audit? Who's going to be doing the audit? What it's going to be included in? And is this part of like the overall district special education plan that's required by the state? Or is this like something that is being done on the district level itself?
Well, typically, when you have a new superintendent in the district, and I, I'm trying to be careful now with using that word "new" before I wear out my welcome, you want to get a sense of how programs are flowing in your district. In addition to that, you want to develop a strategic plan. So after 24 months of being in district, we're now begin to, we're beginning to think about, okay, what are some of the things that we've heard, and what do we need to prioritize in terms of really drilling down to develop a fuller understanding of how things are working in the district? And one of those areas is special education, not because we believe that our program has significant flaws, but I think it's a good place for us to start, because special education is a huge cost driver in the district. And so we want to make sure that we're being as efficient as possible, making sure that kids are receiving programs that are in their best interests. Our district currently has multiple programs running simultaneously. I'll give you an example. We started integrated co-taught at the middle school level, but we're also running self-contained classes at the middle school level. And that's raised some questions for us in terms of balance, in terms of efficiency, and maximizing the use of our staff. So we want to take a look at that. Some of you came forward back in October and started addressing a need, a concern for an integrated co-taught program at the elementary level. And so upon hearing that, it is incumbent upon us to do our research, to determine whether or not the programs that we currently have in place are meeting the needs of our kids. That means we're going to look at data. We're going to analyze that data to determine whether or not we're getting good outcomes based on the programs that we're offering. You see, it's easy to recommend, but we need to make sure that before we start changing things, we're not just changing it for change's sake, but changing it because there's a gap. Gap in terms of outcomes for students, and that's where we need to start. So our audit will seek to answer some of those questions so that we can make decisions as to what will better suit the needs of the kids in the district.
Okay. And then, that makes sense. I think my overall concern really is that, and I understand what you mean by, we need a continuum of services, which is required by New York State, and that goes back to equity and what you were saying with laws and things like that. So my concern is more along between kindergarten, first, and second grade, are we applying least restrictive environment and meeting the federal laws of an idea? And I'm not really sure if we are, as a district. And that's one of my biggest concerns. When I first started bringing up inclusion and ICT classes, it's not necessarily that, it's that all the steps in between self-contained and general ed are missing, or at least it seems like it's missing, at least in K-1st and 2nd.
Okay.
So, I'm a little concerned, especially with a kid that's going into kindergarten.
Right. And I think I've heard you, you know, we've spoken outside of here, as well as the last time you came to the podium, and those are the things that we're going to be looking at as well. However, cautionary note, which I shared back in October, and in all honesty, when we start talking about integrated co-taught, it doesn't get us around some of the issues that many parents brought to the fore, right? There's a concern that we have one building that houses all of our K-2 special education students, and many parents were under the impression that should we go to an integrated co-taught program, it would exist in each one of our elementary buildings, and that is not the case.
No.
Right? And so those are things that we have to make sure, that if we're thinking about transitioning to such a program, that everyone is aware of what that program might look like, and what the impact may be on their children. And so it's going to require us to do a study of what's currently in place, whether or not it's working, and three, if we should make a change, how do we inform the public to make sure they're on board with whatever change we're going to make?
And then my last question, and then I'll walk away.
Okay. You get four.
Sorry. The district plan for special education that New York State requires every district to have, I noticed that some school districts have it available on their websites. Is that something that is available to parents as far as what our plan is for East Meadow?
I will check with Ms. Dobie's to see where that plan exists, and if it's something that we could put up on the website, okay?
Yep.
And just one last piece before you step away from the podium. So that everyone knows, special education, because of its link to federal law, is one of the most highly scrutinized programs in the state. So you use the word whether or not, or if we're in compliance. We are not out of compliance.
I'm saying that nice.
I just wanted everyone to hear that. We are fully in compliance, not only with federal law, IDEA, but we're also in compliance with ed law and commissioners' regulations as it relates to special education in the district. I'll go out on a limb, and I'll say, we were recently identified as a district that has some disproportionality, which is okay. It's typical, and it's common, but one of the things that you need to know, that as soon as you receive that information, we are engaged right now in a self-study to address that concern. So special education, under the auspices of Ms. Dobie's, is one of those areas that we do provide oversight. We are very mindful of the requirements, and we are very vigilant in making sure that we're fully in compliance with the laws.
Again, it just more goes along with that continuum, and that continuum doesn't seem to be available in those lower grades.
Right. Okay.
So that's where my concerns were.
And thank you for sharing that.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions, desires to talk about how great everything is? Okay. Well, then, I think that is the end of this meeting. For the board, we will be going to executive session. However, we will not be coming back to public session tonight. So I do want to thank, I'm sorry. If you want to stick around, we can say goodbye to you. But I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. We do appreciate it. We do appreciate you coming to the roadshow, for those of you who did, for coming tonight. Please don't hesitate to reach out to the board, especially, or especially Dr. Pizzo, he loves getting emails, about specific questions that you have regarding the budget. We don't want people to have misinformation or misideas of what the budget is, or what can be. We are happy to always provide any information that we are able to when we prepare a budget and send the budget out to you. So with that, again.
Shall we come out to vote?
Yes. Please come out to vote on the 21st, between 7:00 and 9:00, at your local elementary school. Thank you, Ms. Rubenstein. And with that.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel.
Thank you, Dr. Eckers. Would someone like to make a second? Ms. Baruch, all in favor? Six, nothing. Thank you, and have a pleasant evening. Get home safe.